Everyone, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for July 24th. This is the swimsuit optional meeting. So that's why we're all very casual this evening. And I hope everybody else is casual and comfortable today. So we have two public hearings on our agenda tonight. Do we have anybody in the audience who is here for public comments that are non-agenda items? And I don't think we do, but we do need to ask. All right, well seeing none, we will move on to item 3A. It is a request for a continuance. Planning file CP 17002, DP 17003, and Natural Resource Review 170004. Trevor, are you doing this one? Or you're standing in for Pete.
I'm standing in for Pete, yes. And simply requesting to continue this to August 14th.
Perfect.
That's it.
Okay, that's great. Do you want to say anything, or do you need to say anything? Would you like to come up and say anything?
Unless you have questions, we have nothing to say.
No, I don't think we do.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to continue, please? Were you doing the date and time certain?
Yeah, 14th.
Yes.
Move we continue item 3A till August 14th.
Is there a second?
Wow, good.
You're out of practice.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we continue this application on the development on Washington Street. And I just read all the planning files to August 14th. Would you call for the question, please? And the roll?
Yes. Okay, I'll call roll. Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
And Chair McGrue?
And I say aye, thank you.
So the public hearing for the hotel will be continued to August 14th, 2017, at 7:00 in the commission chambers here.
All righty. Thank you so much.
Is that it? Are we done?
No, we have one more.
We're all done.
We're all done, okay. We're all leaving out the door with Mark and Dan, so that's good.
Next one's gonna be that fast, right?
Not quite as fast, but close. And they were filling out their slips, so I don't know if they have them. The deputy chief, Ryan, can bring those up, get them? Yes, I do know. All righty, awesome. Okey-dokey. All right, we will move on to our second item for the... Woo, and the lights go down. Second item on the agenda. It is a proposal to replace an existing fire station at 19340 Malala Avenue. Planning file SP 1740. Site plan and design review file CU 1702. Conditional use permit, variance for site layout configuration, and building exterior VR 1702 and VR 1703. And so I will proceed to quickly read through the quasi judicial land use hearing script, because we need to do that. So bear with us. So I just read those file numbers. We have public hearing on this particular application that's scheduled tonight. Staff report has been prepared and has been made available to the public seven days prior to the first public hearing. Hopefully, the only public hearing. Staff report identifies the approval criteria that applies to each applicant's, to each of the applicant's proposals. Staff has analyzed that criteria which is contained in the staff report. Please help us by addressing your testimony to that criteria. The quasi judicial hearing procedure that the Planning Commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure is shown on the chart to my right. And for the public record, anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card, which apparently has been done, and given to planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their cards are received, and you may fill out your address on the card so the city may notify you of its final decision. For the public record, please begin all testimony by stating your name. Testimony and evidence should be directed towards the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written material received by the staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in that record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to staff in order for it to become part of that record. If a person intends to use a PowerPoint presentation, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits to be used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to city staff while the record is still open. If they are not given to staff, they cannot be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional testimony and evidence, or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence, must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the Planning Commission makes a decision in which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised for consideration of the city commission or the Land Use Board of Appeals, or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond to, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the state Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government where it's designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. So with that, we will ask for the staff report, please.
We have to do our...
Oh, yes, that's right, sorry. So has everyone visited the site? Or do you have any ex parte contacts to declare? So we'll start with you.
I've visited the site on a couple of occasions. The last time was when there was a large charred RV in the parking lot. But when your command module burned. But I am familiar with it, drive by it on a regular basis.
Tom?
Drive by on a regular basis, other than that, no.
I've been by the site as well.
I have been by the site, and I have been to the site previously before the mold problem was in evidence, but that's it. And I've had no ex parte contacts with regard to this particular application. All right.
Great. So before you is the presentation for the new Clackamas County Fire Station at 19340 Malala Avenue in Oregon City.
Excuse me, it's not Clackamas County.
I mean, it's Oregon City, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's Clackamas Fire District number one.
Oh, sure, sure. Okay.
No, Clackamas County.
Yes, 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 okay. I'm sorry.
That's a different, that's a different fire district. We don't know them.
I'm getting carried away on the presentation. I'll fix that. At 19340 Malala Avenue. So a little bit of background on the site. So the parcel is at 19340 Malala Avenue. The site, currently there is an existing fire station on the site. Back in May of 2016, it was determined that the fire station was uninhabitable due to a mold issue. On June 1st, 2016, the city commission approved a resolution, an emergency exemption to allow the fire CFD number one to be located at the Clackamas Community College. And right now, the site is bordered by Malala, Malala Avenue to the west, and commercial and industrial development to the northeast and the south. So the proposed project is kind of along the lines of what's existing at this time. It would be for a new 12, approximately 12,000 square foot station that would have an apparatus bay, a public visitor entry, and living quarters, because this facility would be a 24-hour emergency response building. So some of the existing conditions, as you can see right here, so here's the building as it sits on the site right now. Parking, some parking space is located in front of the building. Majority of the parking is located behind the building with a drive aisle to the north and a through bay going out on Tumala Avenue. Here it is, a street view picture courtesy of Google. This is the building now, today, currently uninhabited. So here is the new site plan. So as you can see, it's fairly similar to what is existing, and I have a side-by-side in just a moment here. But you can see there is a through apparatus bay. Majority of the living quarters would be on this, in this portion of the building right here. There's a drive aisle to come through and out on Tumala Avenue. A few parking spaces in front, and the majority of the parking still in back of the site. And then here is a side-by-side, I apologize if it's a little bit small, but you can see that the two buildings are roughly located in approximately the same location. Again, majority of the parking in the back, a through, a drive-through aisle, little bit of parking up in front. Mostly with some, some of the bigger differences with this new site is that they are changing some of the front parking orientation. They're going to create a new PED area leading into the front entrance of the building and leading onto the public sidewalk. They'll be installing some new landscaping along the north side and within the front here. And the proposed design will increase the overall transparency on the front of the building, which I will get to in just a second. So here are the east and west elevations, and my monitor just went... Okay, it's back. So here are the east and west elevations of the building. This top one would be the new front facade of the fire station. So they're kind of, kind of, if you go back here quickly, you hear, see the old one. The new one's going to be updated, new colors, new, new design, clearly stating it's Clackamas Fire District number one on the outside of the building, and a nice visitors' entrance right here, and apparatus bay. On the backside, theme kind of carries through with the red and white. And again, windows for transparency and living quarters. Here are the north and south facades. So here would be the north facade. This would be adjacent to drive aisle, so, and this is the primary living quarter side. So this would be kind of the area where the vehicle would be, or the fire apparatus vehicle would be driving past. And here is the, sorry, the south facade. And there would be, I believe there's one, one living quarter on this side of the building, if I can remember correctly. And then this would be how is most of their shop and some other workstations. And this area would directly abut the development, other development to the south there, the Lil, I forget what it's called, off the top of my head now.
Cooperstown?
Yes, the Cooperstown Development. Here is the landscaping plan submitted by the applicant, so the tree mitigation plan, I should say, so some of the existing trees will be removed. Those are marked in the Xs here, here, and here. And then here is the landscaping plan where the trees will be replaced. So there are trees to be planted along the north and south side, the back here, and then within some of these, I guess, bump outs within the site as well. And then another big item here is, on this PED path, there will be additionally installed landscaping to kind of mitigate for some of the variances that the applicant has requested that I'll get into in just a minute. With an overall effect being something alike like this. So within this application, the applicant has also requested two separate variances. The first variance would be for some site design and configure, overall configuration. I'm not going to read all of this to you, but the big items here would be the parking in the front and the setbacks to the overall site. So you can tell our code calls for commercial buildings to be a little bit closer to the right-of-way than this one is. And it doesn't generally allow parking in the front of buildings. In this case, we found it to be appropriate. One, one reason is because that's kind of what's already there, but other, other reasons being is that the changing the parking in the front of the building and also increasing the PED access and increasing landscaping to kind of break up that, break up that parking, those parking spaces, and giving more space for pedestrian access to the building as a way to make up for that, as well as the setback, as well, as well as the setback. So having that additional landscaping in front, adding that, adding that PED access way, there's also going to be some seating in this PED access way, so people can, walking by can have a chance to sit outside, take a break from walking, whatever they're doing. And the other thing would be just the, the fire vehicle maneuvering the site. Having the building setback a little bit more gives a fire apparatus vehicle more room to maneuver within the site. And when responding to an emergency, gives anybody who's responding a little bit of cha, little bit more chance to, you know, get out of the building, kind of assess where they're going without pulling out straight into traffic right away. So those are some of the reasons for having the building setback and the parking located where it's at. The second variance would be the building design. So the applicant is requesting a variance to the facade articulation on the north side of the building, so that would be, I have it circled right here. This area of the building will be abutting the, one of the through-drive access aisles, which will be gated off. So there, it'll be low visibility from the public right-of-way. The only time that it will actually be visible is either when the gates open, or maybe some people who are working at the fire station will have a chance to see it as they're driving in and out. And then some other, other reasons for doing it this way and not going to the, maybe the maximum of what it should be, is just creating more space for the fire apparatus vehicle. And then also underneath this, underneath these bump outs is kind of where the stormwater swale is going to be. So maintaining what they've proposed to kind of promote those items as well is the reason behind that change to the facade articulation. Overall, that's the application in a nutshell. Are there any questions for me?
Go ahead, Damon.
Is there any proposed changes to the existing street trees, or the...
Not the street trees.
Okay, that's, that's what I was...
As, as well as the curb cuts that goes on Tumala, there's been no proposed change.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I just wanted to... What's the square footage of the existing building?
Existing building? Oh, I don't know off the top of my head.
You're supposed to know all this.
We can defer to the applicant on that.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted, just basically a comparison, there's 12,000, so we'll see, eight or 15, or...
It looks...
Didn't you have that in?
Yeah, don't, don't guess, we'll just, we'll just ask the applicant.
Wasn't that in your...
It is, but I don't recall it off, I'm thinking about 100 of the things, and I don't remember that number off the top of my head.
I thought I saw it in the intro.
The, could you go forward a couple more to where you have the front?
Elevation?
No, the front. Does the, does their sign meet our code?
You mean the, the big wall sign?
One six.
Well, the, and Clackamas Fire District one, and 16. Is it within the square footage of our sign code?
The, this application for site plan and design review does not include a review of signage left to come in for a separate permit for signs. So it is irrelevant for the site plan and design review. The wall length sign is you get one square foot for each linear length of the wall in total. So that would include like, you know, the bump outs and all that.
Sure, yeah.
So that is what the maximum square footage is, as far as how, what this, how that measures up to that be, it's not, Jermaine?
See, I think as part of site plan and design review, we should be looking at signage. So I don't think it's an irrelevant question.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's part of...
It's part of site plan and design review.
But...
It's not part of our approval criteria.
But the key is when they get ready to put that sign up, they've got to come to you and say, it's 3,500 square feet, and we've got 3,600 linear feet, so it fits, or whatever the math is.
Yeah, they'll have to come in for a sign permit as well as a building permit.
I think that's something we need to put in, put back in the code.
Yeah.
It is relevant.
I guess that's it, the rest will be for the applicant, for me.
Tom?
I have no questions at this time.
Paul?
Just kind of a random question. How, how big are the eve overhangs on this building? I got a flash of, of one of the elevations, and I was just kind of curious.
So it looks like in some areas, approximately four feet or so.
Okay, and then, and then it looks like there's a recess where there's no eve overhang over the bays. Is that right?
So are you, oh, I'm sorry, so you're talking about...
Well, you just had it.
This...
Well, see, there's, that's a big eve overhang, but if you, and there's, that's nice there. But I'm talking about the rear of the building.
The rear of the building.
There's kind of an inset there.
Oh, so...
It looks like there's a couple of feet.
Yes, I can tell you here, so it looks...
Looks like there's an overhang.
Okay.
But, well...
A little bit.
Yes, it's probably along the same lines, it's about four feet or so.
Isn't that it, right, isn't that it right there?
Yeah.
I thought it was part of the building initially, and I thought, oh, wait a minute, that's a measurement.
Okay.
That's not a building. It's not part of the building.
And on the sides, it's probably about two feet or so.
Paul, why is that important?
I think it's about four, on the, on the sides, and in the rear is kind of what it looks like here.
Maintenance, work on the vehicles, shadow from rain.
Okay.
You know, used throughout four seasons.
Yeah, might be a little clear around here.
Might not be code-related, but something that...
We can have the applicant discuss it as well.
Yeah, okay. And then also overall, modern design, we're going to do modern design.
I just had a question for you about, some of the findings have this statement which is just a little bit awkward. Staff has determined it is possible, likely, and reasonable that the applicant can meet this standard through conditions of approval. And I've noticed that several places throughout here, and it seems to me the one I was, that caught my eye was under, let me see, 1762 050. There's B, and then there's C, so all, it looks like alls they need to do is submit documentation, because I thought Langau Hansen were registered landscape architects, they've done work for us before.
Yeah, I think that...
And you say, so I mean, I was just, I think you could cut out half of that sentence, just say that, that they can meet this by the condition of approval.
That's the only thing I caught, was the word possible.
Yeah, possible, likely, and reasonable, that's just weird.
I'm not on whatever page you're on, Denise.
I'm on page 15.
But, um...
It's just, it's just an awkward sentence.
Right. There are many criteria we have in our code that are prospective, that deal with things that we don't yet, that the applicant hasn't done yet, but we have reason to believe that the applicant can. And so the reason we use that sort of sentence, I agree with you that that language is a little wordy, but, is a little awkward, but the language we've been trying to use is that we believe that compliance is reasonable and feasible. In other words, we don't have the study. We don't have the landscape plan yet because it hasn't been done, or because it will be done as part of the subsequent review. And so what we do is we say, we have reason to believe that the applicant can do it, or we, there are no, there is no evidence to indicate that the applicant can't do it. And so we, that is sort of a term of art, that reasonable, feasible, and likely to be accomplished is a term of art from a Lubbock case. That sentence is a little bit rough, but that, that reasonable, feasible, and likely to be accomplished is a term of art.
And I think it applies to this one because they submitted landscape plans by Langau Hansen, who we know has landscape architects, but there wasn't a stamp from a landscape architect identified on the plan, and that's what we need.
Yeah, and that's, I'd just say that. So my other question for staff is on page 17, number three. Obviously, this is not in a historic district, so why didn't we just say that it's not located in a district and that, that it's not applicable? Because I don't know how they're gonna, they can't meet anything if it's not in either of those two districts. You see, at the, at three, at the bottom, their finding complies with condition, and then you say, it's determined it's possible, likely, and reasonable that the applicant can meet the standard? I don't see how they can meet that. I'm just wondering if we should just delete that.
Oh, sure, yeah, that might have just been copied over.
Well, but it doesn't, so number, you're talking about number three?
Yeah, because it says it complies...
So number three criteria says, building structures shall be complementary to the surrounding area. All exterior services shall be present in finished appearance. All sides of the building shall include materials and design characteristics consistent with those on the front, use of inferior design. And then it goes into some historic district.
Yeah, I was talking about 3A and 3B.
So it's not only on historic districts, and there's the condition of approval, because there are conditions tied to the exterior design. So it's those first couple sentences about how it's complimentary to the area. So basically, we are saying if it complies with the code, it is, the standard is met, it would be complementary with the area, because it does meet the criteria for design.
Okay, well, I would suggest a revision then, because it's, it's a three-parter here. So you've got three, then you've got A and B. A and B are not applicable, but you still have a condition that you need to deal with number three, where you just read building structures. And this does not, this finding does not say that. It, to me, it just needs to be clear.
The finding doesn't track with the order of the criteria.
Yes, yes. So A and B are not applicable, then he's saying that not in a historic district, blah, 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 design will comply. So it's kind of like, oh, okay, it's a two-parter finding, to me. It, again, it was just kind of awkward, and when I read it, I was like, okay, I'm understanding that.
So you need the, the full finding under, like, three, and then A and B being in A?
A separate finding, yeah.
Yeah.
Just, just a suggestion. And then the rest of my questions are for the applicants. See, we are reading these. So John and Camille, y'all just want to come up? I actually may have a question for Ryan, so, but not at the moment. If you don't really have a presentation, that's really okay. Just introduce yourself.
Okay, I'm John McGrue with Hennebury Eddie Architects, project manager for the project.
And I'm Camilla Coke with Hennebury Eddie Architects, and I'm the project architect for the project.
All right.
As far as, the only thing we would say is that it's been a blast doing this project. I'm an Oregon City Pioneer alum, so being back here is something I, it was 30-some years ago, it's been a while, but this has been a lot of fun. And a lot of folks that still live out here have put some, there's a lot of pressure on us to do a nice job. And I think the other piece that I would say is that from the review and working with the city has been great, and basically, we don't have any problems with any of the conditions or the report, the staff report. We're happy to accept all of those, answer any questions.
So you went to the original and real Oregon City?
The hill, the prison on the hill, yes.
The prison on the hill?
That's what we called it, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Here, here in, so I graduated in 1982.
It's just, just up the street from, from my house in the McLaughlin Conservation District, and we love the, the high school.
I, I do too.
They just filmed a Netflix thing up there.
Really?
It's going to be on, on TV or something.
I still have dreams about that high school once in a while.
Uh-oh. We'll, we'll talk about that after the meeting.
So, can I ask a question?
Sure, are you ready for questions?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Open the public hearing.
Yeah, unless you had a presentation, I don't want to...
No, they don't.
Get ahead of myself. But, yeah, I like the modern design, I think that's really good, and I think that that probably ties in pretty well with what is starting to happen on Malala Avenue, design-wise. The, the color scheme is bold, and I'm just wondering if you could give me a few words on, on how you think that's going to integrate, and how that is going to kind of talk to the other buildings on Malala.
We, when we came up here, we spent a lot of time talking about it, and we started looking at the zoning code before we started, and I think we realized there's some constraints because of what has to happen on the site. But we wanted to make sure that the station that we did had a civic presence, has a value to the community. We talked to the fire district quite a bit before we started. My wife's best friend in high school, his, her dad used to be the chief here, he was up here, and, and he gave me some feedback about, they used to call this the, the club, it was out in the middle of the farm. So we did a lot of study, looking at the city, starting Oregon City from the falls and moving up the hill, and historically what's happened, and looking at, you know, poor Camilla had to listen to me talk about what happened like in 1982. But if you look at the history and the, the kind of work that's come from the mills, which were the metal kind of clad buildings, and what hopefully are going to be reinvigorated, and you move your way up and, and look at what's happened on the hilltop. I mean, when I was in high school, there was no McDonald's, there was barely a hilltop.
There was no hilltop.
There wasn't a hilltop. So you can see, you can see that transition coming... So you can see, you can see that transition coming up through, so we talked a lot about that, the intent of this fire station was that, um, it had to do a little bit like the station down on Singer Hill. That it has to fit now, but it also has to fit a hundred years from now.
Yeah.
Um, and, and, well, hopefully a hundred, but at least fifty.
Cause yeah, as a follow-up, I, I wanna know how this building would also communicate with the building that's on, on South End Road, that we just got done with.
I'm sorry?
The, the.
Yeah, the, we'll see, but that one's surrounded by residential area.
Right, right, but I think, I think that, I get that, but I think that there should be, uh, you know, there are civic buildings, there are fire stations, and I think that there should be kind of a theme that connects them a little bit.
I'll tell you, so in terms of the fire station, we did a survey of, uh, the firefighters especially, and some other folks, about what makes a building look like a fire station. We did that before we designed this building. Uh, we reinforced and asked that question at the Good Morning Oregon City meeting we went to here in the community. And the answers we got, top three without hesitation were, um, being able to see fire trucks. Red, and a flagpole. So, we took that pretty literally, and I think if you look at the, we, and we did want it to be bold, I mean, one of the other things, it's different when you're five feet off the street. And we, we advocate and understand and get why, but we can't to make this fire station work. So, but we wanted this to have a presence within the community and be clear what that was compared to the other buildings.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I had a question about that too, and I, again, you know, each of the stations are in different areas, obviously, this would not work in the McLaughlin Conservation District. Nor would it work on the South End area, because again, it's, it's a different, um, area. But I, that, it kinda reminded me of, um, I don't know if you've been through Gladstone lately, but their fire department is downtown on their main street. And it's, it's got bright, bright red, but it's a little awkward, in terms of its design and how it fits in with everything else around it. And unfortunately, that's the first thing where my mind, when I thought, okay, well, it's not like that. But, um, yeah, I mean, I think the, the red as a, as an accent is, is good, and the, and the bays are set back, so it's not like you're gonna drive by and go, oh, you know, it's really, you know, really red.
Um, what, uh, seismic standard is this gonna be at?
The highest.
So let's say, a couple of things.
It's an essential facility.
Go ahead.
It's an essential facility under the Oregon Structural Specialty Code twenty-fourteen.
I'm wondering if he's, he can hear you.
Yeah, you might need to speak up.
Might need to scoot up just a little bit, and the mic's on, isn't it?
So, it's an essential facility, it's di- designed for an essential facility under the Structural Specialty Code twenty-fourteen. And are you looking for a specific zone?
Well, just, is it up for an eight-point-oh, a nine-point-six, a forty-two-point-one?
That's a good question I'd have to ask.
Paul, and then briefly, you do need to identify yourself.
She did, she did. Yes, they both introduced themselves when they called them up. Yes.
So typi- um, so the fact that it's an essentials facility, and I'd have to have the structural engineer to explain to you exactly what's going, and the story I've heard every time I ask him is they won't be able to tell you specifically what the magnitude is that it's intended to handle. What I do know is, like Camilla said, we've, we, based on the calculations, we're actually in for a building permit now, based on the calculations that we've submitted, uh, we're, we believe, and, and hopefully the calculations will prove out that we're compliant with the requirements for the building code for an essential facility. Also tell you it's a wood-framed building, which is typically one of the most resilient types of structure, so.
Yeah, the flexing rather than exploding bricks everywhere.
Correct, yes.
Okay, and so it's, it's, it's being built to the, the, the highest code that we currently have. Which should hopefully make it being one of the building standing when everything else is.
Exactly.
Um, and I don't know whether this is a question for you or a question for the chief, and I know it's a little bit out of the boundaries, but still, uh, um. Since this is an essential facility, and potentially, if it hits the fan, might be one of the few places where people can go for services, like food and water and shelter. Um, is it, is, I couldn't tell if there was like, storage for like emergency rations, or, and I know it's, this one's more for the chief, is eight people enough if all the firemen have to be there? Because they're not gonna be able to be at home, they're gonna be dealing with stuff, so.
I mean.
I'll, I'll, I'll wait until everybody else is done, but then, but, um, that, that's my concern is, is, will this be a, you know?
I can answer a piece of that, I think, and the chief can correct me if I'm wrong when he comes up. In the conversations we had, especially with the relation to this particular station on the hilltop, uh, the assumption was in the, the, you know, assume the Cascadia subduction event or something like that. That in reality, um, rather than them being at the station serving people who come there for aid, they're likely to all be on calls. So, the, the, we have not, I can tell you there's not a massive, um, cupboard or storage for food or services or anything like that, that was not included in the program. And now, I'll let the, the chief respond to their expectations or how they see things moving forward in that type of, of event. But there is no, we don't have an extra pantry or, or anything like that included in the space.
Okay, cause that's been my experience with other natural disasters, hurricanes, and a couple of floods and typhoons, is, ex-military, that's why, it's like, things aren't that crazy here. But, uh, is that those public facilities become the rallying point for people for, you know, finding loved ones, finding, you know, food, water, until they can figure it all out? So I just didn't know if that was part of your philosophy in the building of, you know, we're gonna have a few extra areas where, you know, MREs are stored, or, you know, we've got a large water buffalo that we'll be using, or whatever the case may be. And that's a thing, if store water is not a thing.
I understand, I know it's not the animal.
Okay, so, uh, that's fine, if that wasn't part of your thinking process.
Yeah, we're all laughing.
Well, again, I, the chief can probably answer better about how they, how they intend to respond, but in terms of space in the building, we didn't have anything programmed. Building's flexible, lots of things can happen.
Yeah, and you pull the trucks out, the bays become huge storage areas.
A massive-sized, open vaulted space for people and storage, so yes. There's potential and opportunity for that.
So I'm curious as to where the wood panel soffit veneer is. Is this underneath here where this brown is that I can see on the?
Exactly, and actually, in, in the final version, it's actually painted, but it is wo- it's a plywood soffit underneath. Basically, everywhere where you were asking about the overhangs, that's a plywood soffit.
And then I'm assuming that the, um, you talk a lot in here about the anodized metal, and I'm presuming that's a matte finish? Or something that, that's just that kind of, that, it, it's just one of those weird things. So, Oregon is gray except for this summer, and so if we have a building that's gray, we got gray skies and gray everything, it's kinda like, ew.
So we, that's why we actually, uh, went through, uh, some real-life mock-ups with the chief and the, and, uh, Chief Charlton to convince them that we liked a lighter gray than the darker gray.
Than the darker gray.
For that exact purpose, that we have a lot of gray days where, um, where light is good, but we also didn't want it to be so white that when we do have the days like we do this summer, that you're blinded off the street. So, while it looks like a white in our, um, pictures and renderings, I think the intent is without, it's not white, white, but you would, if you were to drive by on a cloudy day, you'd say it was a white building. You went by on a sunny day, you'd probably still say it's a white building, but it's not white, it's, if you go look, it's gray.
A gel.
Yeah, yeah, pick, pick, pick your color.
Could you go to the, um, the landscaping where it shows the pedestrian?
Before we move, can I ask a quick question? The gray, I'm not sure what to call them on the top of the building, are those skylights or are those vents?
Those are actually, um.
Prefabricated metal rib panel.
Well, they're, they, well, the roof is prefabricated metal roof, the pieces on the top are actually what we call a light monitor, so it's not a skylight because the roof is not, I mean, the glass is not open to the sky, so it's a roof. And then the north face is a, is a window so that we get natural light into the apparatus bay. There are some vents there to allow natural ventilation to keep, in the summer, to cool the bay that they open up. And then the last piece is, those are actually placed, uh, to, uh, support the PV panels that are, are gonna be installed on top of that.
What panels?
Photovoltaic.
Yeah, go ahead.
Solar panels, and so the roof's sloped to the south, and we're mounting the solar panels on the roof.
So there's gonna be solar, okay.
It is.
Nice.
Okay, so go ahead and change it to what you want it.
Okay, I had a, a question about the, um, pedestrian area, so, well, maybe not this one, because I think the green one, because I think, what I was trying to get, I think, well, maybe actually they both apply, okay. So it looks like on the previous plan, where it says pedestrian plaza, there's a tree in there? It's not on this one, and that was the one I saw, so I think on the landscape plan that you just showed, it did show a tree. Cause I was gonna say, man, that is gonna get pretty hot out there.
Yeah, there's a tree.
There's trees.
And without, so I'm, I'm gonna make a leap of faith and try to say this as delicately as I can. So I'm assuming this is going to be a temporary sort of resting area, and it's not going to become reverse income housing in any, of any sort?
So you have the same goals as the district, and the way that we, what we've tried to accomplish there is the, um, that little, that whole strip, the, the pedestrian area. One, we're also trying to emphasize the public, it's a public building, institutional building, so we wanna make an entrance that's more apparent. And right now, you basically have to walk across the parking lot to get to the building. So that's the overall intent, within that, what we've, we've done, and one of the pieces where the variance came is because where the gate's at, we, we also don't wanna have the public back where the firefighters, uh, rigs and things right through the day. So we needed the, we put the few public parking spaces up front, we tried to rotate them around, and if you look at, if you looked at the details, they're actually in the same plane as the walk with stops so that when cars aren't there, which if, every time I've been by, uh, the existing Station sixteen, the only time the car was there was mine. So the idea is that when there aren't public cars there, it doesn't really look like parking.
Right.
And so we're trying to conceal that. The, the, we know that a part of that site variance was having the trucks drive across that walk, and, you know, again, we're lost, but what we think that does for an advantage for us is we really, uh, the intent, the seating pieces that Trevor mentioned are all west of that drive. And so the intent basically is that the places where people stop for respite and where it becomes kind of a pedestrian amenity are all west of the drive. And, and that you'd really have to make a concerted effort or be there for a reason to be east of that drive.
I, I use, um, the FedEx Kinkos is just beyond this, and there are, believe it or not, quite a few people that walk that. I mean, it's kind of on the way to the post office.
Sure.
So there's some of that going on. I know that right now, there is a, so I'm talking about, not that you need to know, but page fifty-seven, where we're talking about, uh, reader board, I know there's a sign there now, so there, is that just gonna be revamped? Currently the way it is, or is it's gonna be electronic, or what do we, what do you think it's gonna be?
Basically, what we're showing is a new, uh, there's a new concrete base, and that a reader board sits on top of, not, not unlike, I don't know, like the reader board out at the high school on Beaver Creek, right? So it's, basically, its intent is that it's just digital letters for them to put information.
Okay, I.
And then it has a sixteen, and we.
I honestly don't go out that, I don't drive Beaver Creek very much anymore because it's like always crazy, so I, I'm not familiar with the one.
It's just, it basically, or any other, it's, it's essentially a digital readout that is intended to be text.
Text, okay.
Uh, we're not, we're not doing graphics or images or anything like that.
Neighborhood meeting tonight at seven.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Or be sure not to, do not, do not burn today because there's a no-burn ban.
Right, exactly.
We do have, we do not allow burning in Oregon City, yes.
I, I really like the public spaces, and I think that that adds to the vibrancy and contributes to the pedestrian experience for people that are walking up and down the street.
Cause there's really no place to stop.
Right, and, and I'm, I'm seeing the little benches there, I'm, I don't know what those really are, if those are just little stumps, or if they're cement squares, or just exactly.
They're precast, yeah, they're cast-in-place concrete, and they'll be painted red.
They're smooth.
And they're just little cubes that are essentially sort of sculptural at the same time as providing seating.
I would hope to see, um, maybe a mass planting of at least three trees there that are in, to the, that are to the south of those trees, those benches, so that they get a little shade in the summertime.
Yeah, there's one tree, but that may not be.
So there's that tree on that edge, and then we have not added trees to the west edge, uh, primarily because of concerns from the firefighters and their, their sightlines coming out on Malala Avenue.
Exactly, and even the current street tree that is up there is causing some visibility issues with them getting out of the sight, so.
If it's a- a- any way possible, I mean, maybe some of a smaller species, or something that could be done there to actually have a genuine experience there, so that people can't sit there and it'll be shady during the summertime, I mean, of course, you know.
Or at least nine, not nine-hundred degrees because it's been in the sun.
Our hope, the tree, you see the one tree that's there, and when it gets, when it's mature, it's a pretty good-sized tree.
Yeah.
And the same with the street tree that is there, so in the west, you know, when we do get the sun sitting on the west, we're.
And what species are those?
Uh, let me double-check, I can look it up.
You want the Latin name?
While she's looking that up, I'm assuming you are going to put, uh, skateboard stops on them? Because that's ano- that's another lovely spot where I saw somebody leaping off the, uh, state, our station, the main state, we consider it the main station in McLaughlin. Leaping off the front steps, and I was like, ah, cause I know they just repaired that.
That's a good question, I bel- I think that the pieces that we have are not long benches, they're shorter, uh, and we've actually scored the concrete on the piece, so it's less attractive for.
For skateboarding.
For skateboarding, um, but we could look, I, so I don't believe that we have the skateboards, cause the other part about putting the skateboard stops on those little cubes is that it's not as comfortable to sit on either, so we're trying.
Or sleep on.
Or, or sleep on.
These are good trees.
I don't think any of ours, they're all cubes, I don't know that they're actually big enough that you could lay down on the cube.
So the Princeton century ginkgo is what we're proposing?
That's a native, native tree to, to our beautiful state?
Yeah, I think they'll look really nice.
The, the, the overall landscape, we've worked really hard to do a couple of things, one, the firefighters don't wanna spend a lot of time out maintaining.
Raking.
So, uh, we've, are, with Langau Hansen, the intent is that these are all as much as possible native, native, um, drought-tolerant, low-maintenance types of plants. And the idea is that there's very, I don't think there is any lawn.
Make sure the ginkgos are male.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I need to go to the difference.
I hate to ask how you know the difference.
You can, you can have a cult of, of, um.
I, I did have a, um, suggestion, at least on the perimeter, uh, with there being any objection to changing the caliper of the tree from two to three so that they get a little bit faster growth and you get a little more screening there on that side. I mean, two is kinda.
Could you clarify where you are proposing?
On the exterior.
The boundary, the perimeter, these guys.
So, to rather. Yeah, we would be open to.
I, I, I've, I've found them, I have found them, I've looked, you know, so, anyway, um, okay, well, that's.
Two inch versus three inch?
Yeah, or two and a half to three, it's always.
Right now, we have it as three inch in our current construction document, so this, that one may be a little bit outdated.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Anything else, gentlemen?
I have a question out of naivety, and I'm sure I'll be asked by other people. I've never asked a fire station, the big, on the, the current elevation, the big tall column in the middle, that's not on this current one, what, what was that for, and there's no need for it anymore?
It was for drying hoses, so the, the material that the hoses used to be made out of, once they were used, you had to come back and hang them to dry, otherwise they would rot and fall apart. And the new material that the hoses are made out of doesn't have that same rot issue.
I always thought they were, cause I've seen them on Powell on about seventeenth, and I always thought it's for exercise to get the guys to run up and back down all the time.
You have no idea how bummed I was to find out that they didn't need them anymore, I wanted a tower on the building.
Okay, thanks, it was just like.
And some of those towers are for that training, and that was another piece of this program, but it didn't fit on the site, so.
So I actually do have a fire equipment question, and that's only because it came up at, um, the main station, i.e. Station fifteen. Because we have a historic building and this is not, so I know that the fire equipment is changing in terms of its size, and one of the questions I got asked sort of off the record was the height of the doors, so I'm assuming the height of these doors is a little bit taller in case new equipment comes out that will accommodate the ladder and the bigger, you know, the, it's not so much the, the, the equipment is wide, it's taller with all the stuff they have on it.
Correct, um, so, right now, the front doors are at a fourteen feet tall, um, and the back doors are at twelve feet. And their apparatus is less than twelve feet, probably ten feet, I don't know, you could give me the full height?
The station's also designed around, one of the reasons why this, uh, and I can't give you the exact square footage of the previous building, but this is a much larger building.
Larger building.
It's two companies instead of one company, uh, it's, and the apparatus bay, while the front edge of the apparatus bay is in the exact same location as the, um, original, the bay is much deeper because this, this building is intended to accommodate a ladder truck.
Yeah.
Which will be the biggest piece of equipment.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Sixty-two-foot-long truck, and that was the thing that pushed the building back, just getting that rig out before you hit the street. You need that clearance, and then to be able to make the turn, so.
Not quite as easy to drive, even though, you know, in Seinfeld, it looked pretty easy when Kramer's on the back on the ladder, swerving, driving around.
Right.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you. You have ones for, uh, Chief Ryan?
Thank you.
Ryan, hurry. Ryan Haring. So you just have to say your name for the record.
Ryan Haring, Deputy Chief, Clackamas Fire District. Thanks for having me.
Thanks. Well, actually, they kind of brought up one, I was concerned about the street trees and your visibility. It's the same issue I had when we were doing the bus barn, it's, you guys are up much higher, and so that nice little tree planting is in your face, so the current street trees, you're able to do the work around it, isn't, I mean, or do you need to get rid of one of them, remove it, or?
We haven't been told by any of the crews that work there that's an issue. I personally haven't worked at that station, so I can't tell you exactly, but they're busy enough that I can tell you this, if it was an issue, we would have heard about it, so, and during this whole process. Anything that they felt we could improve upon was relayed, and that was not an issue.
Okay, good, because it's, I mean, I know you've got the light, and everybody's supposed to stop, we all know. And, boy, I just hate to, like, some bicyclist or whatever, just because the tree's in your face and they're not paying attention, so. Okay, so there's that. Just roughly, what's the increased square footage? I don't expect numbers, but it's like, it's 2,000 square feet more, it's a whatever.
I'm gonna go out on a limb here, I didn't bring the old documents, but I'm gonna say it's nearly double.
Oh, great.
In square footage, mainly because the apparatus bays are significantly wider, but also the living quarters have been increased in size for up to eight people.
So you don't have triple bunks anymore.
Correct, correct.
And then that gets to my, the other thing, which is off-topic, but still of concern, is what, what is the vision for the facility if there's a major event, you know, heaven forbid, a tornado, or, you know, an earthquake or whatever, and, because like I said, my experience has been major public facilities, police and fire stations are where people go.
So the vision for that has kind of evolved a little bit over time, so, and really, we saw a little bit of a shift post 9/11. So kind of the idea prior to that is that you're right, it would be a rallying point, and what we started to figure out is in the event of a major, say, an earthquake or some big issue, the firefighters aren't gonna be there. They're gonna be out, and the facility has to be secured and available for them to get back. So you'll notice, if, you know, through like the CERT groups and some of our public outreach, we talk about people having a 72-hour kit, to be able to take care of themselves for that first three days. And kind of part of that is the idea that not everybody would come rush to the fire station or the police station, because the, you know, everyone's gonna be out and about trying to figure out, you know, where to send resources and how to mitigate the problem. So that would give time for then, if we wanted to set up a rallying point or something, we could bring extra staff in. So the, kind of the vision for that has been scaled back a little bit, so it's not built to immediately house an, you know, an inrush of people. And it's more built to support the people that are working there, and then later, you know, people, it could be set up later during an event with extra staffing.
Yeah, and I wasn't envisioning it being housing, it's just more like, I'm gonna go there because I ran out of water, or, I mean, because if even 1% of the people in the city don't do their kit, that's 350 people. So that was just my thought, and whether or not there's enough room in the bunk room for, like, you're, you know, I assume everybody's gonna be called in, and, and I'm not thinking, so, people are gonna be out, and then there'd still be the called-ins, and there'd still be, you know, it'd be hot bunking or whatever it is, but that was just, is there an ability, well, I assume you just start dropping them in parking spots, but for like a survival pod, like if the National Guard drop, comes in and drops like a, you know, five pallets of whatever, then there is the ability to do that.
Absolutely, and I think all of our facilities, you know, would be accepting of something like that. So it's just not built into the building, but certainly we could receive something and handle that.
Okay. Then that's it, I, yeah, the building itself, I think, is gonna be a, I mean, it's, it's kind of an industrial building in an industrial area, but it's classing up, you know, everything, and I sure as heck want your guys to be able to be safe and and go to sleep and go, I'm not gonna wake up with the flu in the morning because of mold or an electric fire, or whatever.
We've had both, yes.
Yeah, I'm looking at the proposed picture of the cubes, that's enough to skateboard on.
Yeah.
Having been a former skateboarder myself, I, we didn't jump on things back in the day, so...
But if they're, if they score them, then that'll be it. And then the other, I guess the other thing I would say about those little seats is, make sure there's a little concavity or convexity, so that, well, and, so it doesn't create a puddle. Because then those people just stop using it, and the rain goes away, but there's goop there, so they don't...
You mean like in the groove part?
Well, so that it isn't a bowl. You know, some, I've been to some parks where they do it, and they put the little bowl, so your butt fits in it better, but then it turns into a junk spot, you know, so. But I love the fact that you're investing so wisely in the city. I know you need a station, you could just put up a block, you know, square brick block and get away with it, but, but thank you for, for being part of the community.
I think a couple of things I was gonna mention is that, when you, when John mentioned that the fact that he'd grown up here, that was, when the city limits ended at Tri-City Bowl, that was, that was in the county. So there may have been a county conditional use permit, I don't know whether you guys checked or not, but that, something just came into my brain. And then the other thing I was gonna mention is that the city has, one of the groups has ordered some bicycle racks that are kind of in the shape of the arch bridge, and maybe you guys could find out about who has those and maybe get some of those for the bike racks, because that'd be kind of cool.
And I'd have to make sure it was okay with our architect, but certainly we'll look at that.
I think he's smiling, he's smiling.
I'm not gonna promise anything, he might cheat down, so.
I don't, he's smiling, so that's a good, that's a good thing.
From my reading of the material in the staff report, you guys are asking for the material and design variances to increase the functionality of the fire station itself, and not necessarily value engineering or reducing costs or anything. I wasn't really clear on that, I just wanted to make sure that the variances that we're asking for.
Okay, that's it. Okay, we're good? Is there anybody in the public who would like to make some public testimony or comments tonight before we get on with it? Nope? No comments?
We're all on the design team.
Oh, yeah, I know, I was just...
We're engineers.
Oh, okay, all right. You like it? Okay, all right, so being that there is no member of the public here, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and allow for planning commission deliberation. Gentlemen?
I really don't have anything to add. I like that you mentioned the three inch, because I hate the twigs that show up and then they break, or...
Somebody breaks them.
They're not hardy enough, or whatever, so that's the only thing I have. I don't have any issues with any of the conditions. I think it's, all the variances are logical. I mean, of course you need to drive over the pedestrian pathway, or you're never gonna get the vehicles, you know, back in. And I've been in some cities where literally they stop in the street and they back into the, into the building, and it's that, you know, so you gotta do the loop, I mean, that's just basic necessity, so I think it's all, all well within their requirements.
I think Damon covered it everything, but he just said something that maybe you want to do. Because those are such large trucks to be, that the cement walkway would, would, would have to be reinforced for all the heavy trucks?
Probably.
Is your mic on?
Turn it off so I can say bad things. No. No, my question was, Damon said everything, and I think everyone here's covered it. My only question was, I was thinking, as he was talking about the trucks, is the, does the sidewalk have to be reinforced for people walking across there? Because those trucks are so heavy, and it's, I figured as much, just a thought that came up when he said that.
Okay, Paul?
I'm ready for a motion if everybody's done.
No, I'm waiting for my turn.
All right.
It's your turn.
I'm letting you know that I'm ready.
Okay.
And I'm ready.
All right, well, I, generally, I really scrutinize, well, I did scrutinize anyway, I scrutinize variances, because variances are basically the exception. This is not a commercial building, this is an emergency services building that happens to be in a commercial area. And I think that this is what the variance criteria was designed for. I think that everything that they're requesting is reasonable. I don't expect this building to be up to the street, I don't expect it to have a whole ton of windows, it's not that type of a building. This is an exception, and that's what the variance is for. It's an exception, I think that they meet all the criteria. I made a couple of comments about fixing one of them, but I think that this is appropriate, and I think that they've made a lot of good suggestions and proposals for this particular facility. Obviously, it's needed very much in this portion of the city. I feel very lucky that we have our own station in my neighborhood, and I think the other neighborhood down there needs to have their fire station back in operation and running, so if you're ready for a motion, we can go there.
I move that we approve SP 1740, CU 1702, VR 1702, and VR 1703.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Wait, wait?
I was looking through the conditions real quick.
Yes.
Condition 9B has paper bark maples, will be planted a minimum of two inches in caliber, did we, was that the three you were talking about?
Well, that and the trees on the south elevation, and there's a few on the north elevation, they said that in their specs, they already have three inches, so that can be changed to three inches to match their...
No, it says a minimum, so that's fine.
Match their specs, and I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
So your motion is to keep the staff report as is, amend the conditions?
You ready for me to re-roll? Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
And Chair McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes for zero.
I should have you note that I had a birthday party at the Station 15 just a few years ago, not too many years ago, but I had my birthday party there. I got to slide down the pole. That's just really awesome.
I'm glad that's off the record.
Anyway, Laura, do we have any communications?
I actually got to drive a quid.
You, thank you very much. So I just wanted to announce our Greenway for a Day for the trail. It's a part of the Oregon City Loop Trail, and it switches a regional trail. We are working on a design from the promenade to the Children's Park in Kenema, and in order to identify an optimum location for this pathway and a design for it, we're gonna pretend like it's there and call it a Greenway for a Day, and we're gonna close off some locations and see what it feels like, and get some suggestions about what that design should be. So it's this Saturday, which is July 29th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. There's also gonna be an Ivy Poll that morning around this location as well. I have cards to pass out, you can always go to www.orcity.org to find out more.
Listen, I apologize, I have a board meeting from 10:00 to noon on that day, so I will not be there.
Saturday meetings.
Well, we switched it so we could be at the First City Festival last week and frying on the sidewalk.
We are too busy with too many events.
Yes.
And then the other last announcement is that we have got into contract with Cogan's Owen Green as a consultant to help us with our equitable housing project. So you'll start to see us form groups and committees to identify housing opportunities within the city, and identify ways to provide more housing, look at our processes for housing and fees and things like that, and see if there are ways that we could reduce barriers and increase incentives for additional housing opportunities at all ranges.
I think we all want to be very involved in that.
Yeah, so there'll be, we'll let you know more as it unfolds, but it was just approved by the city commission last week. So over the next year, we hope to have a legislative amendment before you to amend the code in some form. At the very minimum, to be a little more reader-friendly. That's it?
All right, any other communications, anything else anybody wanna say? All right, meeting is adjourned.